Good evening, welcome to our school board meeting tonight if you'll please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and again, welcome this evening. First, on our agenda, we will do the land acknowledgement and Director Weatherspoon has that this evening.
Evergreen Public Schools resides on the traditional lands of the Chinaman peoples and the Kowalski tribe. They have lived on and cared for this land and its waterways since time immemorial. We thank them for their stewardship and make this acknowledgement to open a space of recognition, inclusion and respect for all Indigenous students, families and staff in our community.
Thank you. All right, next we'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. We should also recognize that President Ginny Gronwald is not with us this evening if we can excuse her absence.
Move to excuse Ginny.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Move to adopt tonight's agenda as presented?
Second.
All right, so in first and second, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Perfect, thank you. All right, we're going to move on. Special recognition, this is fun. We have Janay Gomes this evening that's going to come up and do our introduction of new administrators.
Hello. Thank you for having me. This evening we have a variety of new administrators to bring in. We saved all of our new hires to bring them at one board meeting this year rather than stagger them throughout. The senior directors of elementary, senior director of secondary and our senior director of special services are going to be facilitating all of our new administrators. We have principals here to talk about the associate principals as well. And we're going to begin this evening with Senior Director of Secondary Heather Fowler, Heritage High School Principal Derek Garrison, and Associate Principal Megan Thompson.
Thank you, Janay. Good evening. I'm excited to welcome two new members to our secondary leadership team. Both of our two new associates were already in our Evergreen system and are excellent examples of how we grow and foster leadership within our system. And I will start off by introducing Derek Garrison, who is our principal at Evergreen High School, who will introduce Megan.
Good evening, thank you for this opportunity to speak about Megan Thompson. We are super excited at Heritage High School to have her as an associate principal. As Dr. Fowler mentioned, she's one of our own products, has done great work. This is year 10 for Megan. She started in special ed. Before going into education, she had worked at OHSU. Within our school, she started out in the sped department and then has been our dean of students for the last three years. Which as we know, the last three years is kind of a vague time. She did everything. So a lot of student behavior, a lot of restorative work, a lot of work with marginalized populations. She also was, I would, I don't know there was an official title of maybe assistant to the COVID captain, but during COVID times had many responsibilities. Every day was a new challenge and she took it on with great energy and alacrity. We are super excited to have her. Her background, educationally, she's the rare vandal cougar and Viking. So all kinds of mascots for Megan. So again, thrilled and honored to have Megan join our team administratively as an associate principal.
Thank you for that. Great introduction. I honestly, this is my 10th year actually Heritage as well as Evergreen Public Schools. And I just want to thank you guys. I've really enjoyed my time, especially at Heritage and Evergreen Public Schools. So I thank you guys. I really look forward to doing some more work and doing good work with our teachers and schools and just thank you guys for everything.
Thank you. And next we'd like to welcome Dr. Greg Brown and Carissa Karacy who are representing Chehalah Middle School, our principal and new associate.
Good evening, thank you. It's nice to see each of you. I am honored tonight to introduce you to our newest Associate Principal Chehalah Middle School, Carissa Karacy. I've come to know Carissa as engaging and talented instructional leader within our system and we are thrilled to have her join our team. In just a few short weeks, she's had a very strong impact on the campus of Chehalah, not only the students and the families, but personally for me in my leadership practice. And it's wonderful when you can add a teammate who is going to strengthen your own leadership, who's going to challenge you, who is going to give you opportunities to pause, reflect. In my efforts to become a more well-rounded and responsive instructional leader. And so we are thrilled to have Carissa as part of the Chehalah team. Carissa Karacy.
Thanks Greg. I am really grateful and honored to be here and stepping into this new role as Associate Principal of Chehalah Middle School. The community has just welcomed me with a warm embrace and I'm really grounded in the values that they hold and excited for what's to come. And I look forward to all the ways that I'm going to be supporting Chehalah and promoting equitable learning experiences for all of our students. Thank you. Welcome.
And now we have Senior Director of Elementary Education Bobby Height to introduce her new leadership.
Our new people, thanks Dr. Fowler. Good evening Superintendent and Board. So nice to see all of you at the elementary leadership positions. We have the privilege of hiring four new associate principals along with one new principal as well. The four associate principals came through the EPS system. Range of experiences from high school to elementary to middle school to special ed. So we're super excited about all the experiences they are bringing to our schools. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Scott Monroe to introduce our first principal.
Thanks Bobby. Good evening, everybody. Good evening Superintendent Boyd and members of the board. I echo everything that Bobby just said. We're just thrilled to have these folks with us. It's my pleasure to introduce to you Mr. Sam Moranto, who's the principal at Silver Star beginning this year. Sam began his educational career in Clark County, Nevada, not here, where he served as a teacher, an instructional coach and as an assistant principal at an elementary there. Prior to coming to Evergreen, Sam served very successfully as an elementary principal at two elementaries across the river, one in Park Rose and one in Gresham Barlow. And he's already made a tremendous impact on the Silver Star community and staff. Really quickly, I was there the other day, you know, walking in, I hadn't even gotten in the door yet and a couple of staff members came up to me unsolicited and stopped me and said, things are really going great with Sam. We really like his style of leadership. Thank you so much for bringing him here. So kudos to Superintendent Boyd for leading that process and Sam, we're thrilled to have you here. And so Sam, why don't you say a few words?
Now I have to remember to get them their Starbucks gift cards for saying those nice things about me.
Good thinking.
I am very honored to be part of the Evergreen Public Schools and thank you so much Superintendent and the Board of Directors for this opportunity. I couldn't be happier to serve as the next principal at Silver Star and I am loving getting to know all of the students, staff and community members and I look forward to a long, successful career here in Evergreen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Sam. Next up, we are going to introduce Elizabeth Brawley, our principal from Riverview and she is going to introduce her new associate principal.
Thank you Bobby. I'm excited to be here tonight to introduce Scott Eschols. Scott Eschols is not new to the EPS community. He's been serving the EPS community for 20 some years in multiple capacities. Number one is teacher of science at the secondary level, which I think brings a very valuable perspective to the elementary lens. Just seeing where we need to bring kids up to. He has that perspective. He has done an amazing job already jumping in, hitting the ground running. The community loves him, the students love him and we are just so excited to have him at Riverview.
Thank you Elizabeth and thank you for giving me this opportunity. As she mentioned, it's been over two decades in this district as a, as a teacher and as a coach and at the secondary level and now having an opportunity to be at the elementary level. It's just given me an opportunity to see education and the way this district runs from a new leadership role and I'm very excited to work with a great mentor and to continue in Evergreen Schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, I think is Dawn Harris from York Elementary, who is here to introduce her new associate principal.
And family. Hey, hi, I'm Dawn Harris. I'm the proud principal of York Elementary Explorers and I want to introduce Jen Goodwin, who's my new associate. Actually Jen and I were partners before we were partners. She was my special ed coordinator for a couple of years and helped me through a lot. And we're super excited to have her experience around that and at York to implement and get better around our special ed program to really get inclusive schools up and running at a successful rate. But I love her energy and everything is contagious about her that I'm learning from her as much as I think she's learning from me. But I really appreciate just her knowledge and questioning every day that makes me reflect. I think Mr. Brown also said that, but just thankful to have her as a partner.
Thanks Dawn. I'm so grateful to be here. My husband and my son Emmett and Brantley, and he actually is at Mill Plain Elementary. But so grateful for their support and their grace and their love as I transition into something new. And so thankful for the board and the department leadership, just in the vision casting that's happened and getting to be part of that in two different realms and roles. It's really exciting. And so to be boots on the ground at a building, getting to know kids, working with staff and getting to be in it is just a real treat and blessing. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Glad you came to watch your mom.
So next up, it's my pleasure to introduce or reintroduce Kimberly Anderson, the principal at Fisher's Landing Elementary School. And so Kimberly and her new associate are on their way in too.
It is my privilege and honor to introduce our newest member of the Mariner family, Melissa Buo. And Melissa, as some of our other new introductions today are coming, is coming from right here in EPS, where she served as a universal design for learning specialist. And we actually had the opportunities to partner together last year as she supported some of our work at Fisher's Landing. So and before coming to EPS, she served as an instructional coach in Renton and also in California in the field of special education. And also, as my colleagues have said, so excited to work together and push on each other as we work on our inclusive practices and our culturally responsive practices at Fisher's Landing. So we are so fortunate and so grateful to have Melissa join us.
Thank you. I wrote mine down. Just wanted to say that I'm grateful for the opportunity to thank the board and the Evergreen Public Schools community. I began my work last year at ASC Office where I was welcomed with supportive open arms. Was able to work with leaders who were equity minded, student centered and always willing to collaborate to move ideas forward. I am now able to take that experience and my years of working as a coach and instructional role to build the building level. And I've again been met with supportive open arms. I'm impressed and grateful every day for my colleagues at Fisher's Landing and the work we are partnering in, work that consistently puts students at the center. I would be remiss to not also take a moment to thank our Superintendent John and, and our Chief of Operations Janay for supporting my transition into this role. As Amy Poehler once said, find a group of people who challenge and inspire you, spend a lot of time with them and it will change your life. I'm surrounded by people who challenge and inspire me daily and I'm grateful to all of them. Thank you for this opportunity.
Glad you're here.
Thank you. All right. One more elementary associate principal to introduce and we have Erin Parman from BBC, our lead principal here to introduce her.
Good afternoon. Thanks for having us. It's my pleasure to introduce Seema Shaheen as our new assistant principal at BBC. She has been in EPS for several years. Prior to this, she was a math teacher at Union High School and then transitioned to Evergreen High School where she was also a math teacher, instructional coach and freshman to success coordinator. And then last year she was interim associate principal at Endeavor. She's been a great addition to the BBC Bulldog family. I appreciate how she's come in and really prioritized building relationships with students, staff and family. She's a great collaborator and she has a great sense of humor, which is important in this job. So it's my pleasure to introduce Seema.
Thank you Erin. My name is Seema Shaheen. I just want to take this opportunity to thank you so much for supporting me, for encouraging me. I've been with EPS for 14 years. And I just very appreciate everything that the district have done for me. So I would just like to say thank you to the board and to our Superintendent John and to Dr. Williams. Thank you for everything. Thank you for believing me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I see on his way in the door already is Senior Director Matt Hill, Senior Director of Special Services. So Bobby and I will turn the mic over to Matt.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. It is with pleasure that I have the opportunity to introduce Kate Winters. She is our new nursing services manager. And she comes to Evergreen Public Schools with a wealth of healthcare knowledge, 25 years' worth of serving patients primarily in hospitals and supporting and managing nursing staffs. She's done that up and down the I-5 corridor from as far north as Centralia to down in through Oregon. A little quick tidbit about Kate is if you're ever feeling down and you need a fortune, she has a bowl full of fortune cookies. So just know you walk by and you see the bowl, go ahead and open it and enjoy a fortune.
That's nice.
Thank you. I brought my significant other Chris with me. I could not have done or been part of this journey at all without his support. And I am just really grateful to be here. I feel like this is a very natural progression for me. I have always been in school myself as I have traversed in healthcare and I just have had this overwhelming experience since I've been here and support and it's really just an amazing, you know, people here. So I just want to say thank you very much.
Welcome.
Thank you.
I think we're done with introductions.
Well, thank you.
Was this Holly's position last year? Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
All of those fortune cookies. I was like yum. All right, that is always good to meet our newest administrators. It's always a fun night. Okay, next up is our board consent agenda. We'll entertain a motion for approval.
Move adoption of the board's consent agenda is presented.
Second. Moved in second and all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, passes. We'll go on to the superintendent consent agenda.
I move for approval of the superintendent consent agenda.
Second. Moved in second and all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, next up is our superintendent report. I'm going to hand it over to Superintendent Boyd.
Thank you Director Boca Negra. And I'm going to report on a couple of things. My goal, I have five or six different goals that I'm working on. One of them is around instructional leadership and the other one is strategic planning. So I want to talk a little bit about those two things that I'm focused on here in the Evergreen School District. And so as you know, Director Bradford and Weatherspoon were at our first strategic planning meeting. And as you know, last year we completed a process, but in the middle of two COVID spikes, a levy failure, a levy effort to pass it and some budget reductions. We were able to complete the process, but not really put it into a plan that was operationalized yet. So the whole focus of this year is really to make that operational. So by the end of this year, we're going to be really clear about what we mean by our vision and what that means for for students and what our goals are specifically around the student experience. We're going to have a clear understanding of everybody's responsibility from the classroom to the boardroom. That's our theory of action. We're going to be crystal clear about the, what we're going to measure, the strategies we're going to use. And I'm really excited and my commitment and the board's commitment is that this isn't just going to be a strategic plan that sits on the wall and looks pretty. We're going to make it actionable and we're going to make it improve outcomes, equitable outcomes for our students. So excited to engage in that work. We're phasing it in this year with some ambitious instruction focused on all instruction, but with a laser light focused on math and the improvement of our math. We know that one of our principals challenged his staff. He said, we got a 13 percentage point improvement in in our levy from when we started to when we finished and we can do at least that in maths. We're really putting that challenge out to our staff. We want to see some, let's lean in together and to see what we can accomplish together. I'm absolutely pleased to say that our teaching, learning and equity staff's been brilliant. Our principals are absolutely leaning in and our teachers are learning alongside a new curriculum and we're all, we're all put, we're all rowing together on that ambitious instruction specifically related to math. And so my role, I'm working with the school supervisor, Scott, Bobby, Heather, and we've added Clarissa. And so the four school supervisors and Dr. Williams and I are meeting regularly to, you know, re-envision the, how we support, supervise, evaluate and grow our principals. And that's been really exciting, good work. And Dr. Williams and I are, are working side by side with them, visiting them, observing them while they're doing their processes with principals. We're also focusing on making sure that our school's school improvement planning process is robust, significant, deep and meaningful and, and it aligns to our goal of ambitious instruction for math and also getting some equitable outcomes for our students. So we have a team, our whole teaching and learning and equity team is focused. I'm hoping I'm still not stealing all your thunder over there for your report, but really focused on making sure that they're calibrated, going out to schools and really doing that side by side support, checking in with them, looking at data, looking at some of the initial assessments. We did a first round of iReady and all of our schools leaned into that really ambitiously. And so we'll have some, a good baseline data point to work from and lots of ways in between to get that focus continued. So that's really what I wanted to focus on today. I'm so excited about that work and so optimistic about what it's going to do for us. And yeah, that's, that's my report.
Thank you, John. All right, next is the good news report, Executive Director of Communication and Community Engagement Craig Bernbach. Welcome Craig.
Thank you for having me, School Board and Superintendent Boyd. The magic button to be pushed. There it is. Of course, the, this is the first good news report of this school year. So it's kind of action packed. We have to start out with events that many of the board members were at and of course Superintendent Boyd, which is the ribbon cuttings at both Mountain View and Y East Middle School. We had cooperative weather, a little hot, but beautiful blue skies. At Mountain View, we were able to have the band element, which was really great to have a lot of students there and, and to open up that new school. At Y East Middle School, wonderful ribbon cutting, but we also have with Y East, not just a brand new school, but a brand new mascot. They're now the Wolverines, which means a brand new logo. And it was a really special moment. I know Director Perkins was here at Y East when Sarah Folden, the artist that designed the new logo, came and presented an art piece that she had painted. And Sarah Folden is a Kowalski Indian tribe member who partnered with students, the district and the school to create this new logo in a contemporary coast Salish style, which is specific, specific to the people, the Pacific Northwest coast. And she shared just a wonderful story of how this was a healing process for her. Cause when she was a student, she had an experience where she was asked to design a logo for her school that was not in accordance to her traditions as a Native American and that it kind of put her off from creating art for almost 20 years. So this experience was extremely healing and we're going to have her, we're trying to arrange to have her come in and tell her story so we can follow up on that. I want to share the Mountain View Giving gown closet. This was started this year by Mountain View. Their secretary Marie Casillas was really the point person on this and the idea is to get gowns and dresses donated from the Thunder community so that students who want to attend homecoming or prom and maybe not be able to have the resources to purchase a gown or a dress, they're able to come in here and get a gown or dress free of cost. And in the new school, it really does look like a retail store because it's really beautiful. And Mary Casillas just shared with me yesterday that after this story was put out on their Facebook page, they had a lot of donations, including one family that donated 50 gowns that they got from Amazon as a family. So in one, and she was, Mary was saying that they were, the gowns were depleted because so many students were taking the opportunity to get them. So that was really great. We, you know, before school started, we had a lot of donated school supplies. I do always want to highlight Zoom info who are just a great supporter. They supplied these 91 backpacks to Orchard's Elementary School. Cascadia Tech Academy, I wanted to highlight them. On September 17th, a group of students, they celebrated Constitution Day, the 235th anniversary of our Constitution Day. And they're currently studying the US Constitution. So I thought that was really cool. We continue to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month in our schools. I wanted to share this story at Ellsworth Elementary School. They have a group of families, parents and family members that are family members of Hispanic students at Ellsworth and they meet once a month to talk about how they can support the school and learn about community activities and services. And they put this together for the students. Took them many hours as you can imagine and the students are able to have this beautiful display and there's a lot of learning going on with this display as well. So I thought that was a great way to to share knowledge about Hispanic Heritage Month. Of course, we had a ton of summer activities. I do want to highlight Illahi Elementary School, who this year had a free summer camps for their students. So the principal there, Kia Masanaga and their FCRC coordinator kind of had this dream to do this. And this year they were able to supply free camps to their students. So that was beautiful. I want to go down to our first day of school. First week of school, we were able as a community communications department, get to every single school and share something via social media, which was great. And of course we got all the board members that came out on that first day of school, but I wanted to highlight Superintendent Boyd rode a bus to school to Harthwood Elementary School. He was the largest fifth grader ever and we did, it's a very enjoyable video, watching the students interact with Superintendent, Superintendent Boyd and kind of on their first day, he got to experience that with them. So that's what I have. So thank you.
Thank you Craig. All right, next up is our teaching and learning and equity update with Dr. Williams and Clarissa Hightower. Hi.
Good evening. I am going to do a brief share of Dr. Williams' piece because you are correct, you definitely did. I'm not going to say take thunder. That shows coherence and alignment among us. It's so great. In addition to all of the, I'm sorry, let me pause. Thank you very much for having me, Superintendent Boyd, Board of Directors. In addition to the wonderful things that Superintendent Boyd shared as it relates to our school improvement plans, on Monday of this week is when all of our building principals submitted their first drafts of their school improvement plans. The task now is for that wonderful school support, SIP support team, teaching and learning equity department leaders to now dig into those drafts, provide feedback and make sure that they have the support that they need to have this living, breathing school improvement plan to be ready for you all to see in November for the first time. In addition to that, today in this very space, we had our first equity team professional learning communities. It was the middle school group as well as the elementary school group. And what those are is in it, in an effort to make sure that we continue the work of equity that we began. We are building the capacity of the equity team leaders in our building. So all of our schools have an equity team. And they have selected two equity team leaders, usually the principal and associate principal to attend monthly PLCs to help them and guide them as they lead their equity. To attend monthly PLCs to help them and guide them as they lead their equity teams in their buildings. So our wonderful Equity Advancement Specialist Shannon Shambaugh, who you got to meet on last time, one of the folks you got to meet on last time. Is leading that space for them and helping them establish some structures and parameters around leading that space as well as. Very specific ways in which those equity teams will support their school improvement plans. Our final, it's very bittersweet, our final Equity Advisory Committee. Meeting or gathering took place over this weekend on Sunday. I say that to say it is bittersweet because they set the bar really high for a group of fantastic and dynamic people to continue working with. But now we will open up application for our new Equity Advisor Committee or our second rendition of. On October 10th. So the application will go live then. We plan to keep that open for at least three weeks. Our. Our members gave some feedback on how we can improve upon the application process as well as how we can make sure that. What happens during our meetings is something that continues to be super applicable and supportive of the district's equity vision as well as the. Eventual fleshed out and really intentional strategic plan. Two opportunities on October 14th that we are providing our bilingual parent liaisons. Will be providing diversity and cultural identity professional development to our peers. And myself, Dr. Williams, Jamila. Jamila Singleton and the team of athletic support folks will be getting together to provide professional development on October 14th. For culturally responsive athletics and that's going to be a group as large as 800. Yeah, I know, right? We're really excited about it. So coaches and athletic directors are invited and they're also bringing student athletes. And so we're taking the opportunity to. Provide for them some strategies and supports for being proactive around how our students interact with each other. To promote community and sportsmanship. The last two things are some partnerships I wanted to share with you. The first. We are partnering with Vancouver Public Schools and ESD to continue the affinity spaces that we started. They have some structures in place that we are going to be tapping into, some facilitators. That we are going to be tapping into and we're going to be having our affinity group meetings and spaces in a collaborative effort with folks from EPS. With the hopes of extending it to all of Clark County eventually. And finally, a partnership with, again, VPS, but, but with WSU. To increase diversity and representation in our administration staff. So prior to me obtaining this position, there were some attempts to get this work going. It didn't quite stick, but now I think we've got all the things we need. We're going to be partnering with VPS. They applied for a grant and received it. That will help one diversify leadership pathways, but also give. Opportunities for our teachers who are interested in going into admin. To have tuition support to attend and other classes that are. Required for credentialing program for admin. And I believe that is all of my updates. Any questions?
Questions for Clarissa?
I'm going back on my notes. The equity team leaders, were you talking about all the buildings or elementary buildings?
Yes, all of them.
Thank you.
Really appreciate the community cohesiveness because I, I firmly believe that. The whole community needs to be working on this and supporting what you're doing and our students. So I appreciate a lot that. It's a more community involved effort. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next up is Board Comments, comments by the Board. Does anybody have anything tonight? I have a question. So this Friday and Saturday is the General Assembly for WASDA and I know several of us were signed up. Did we determine who's going to be our voting delegate? Please take their credentials.
I'll be doing it on Friday.
Okay.
No, we need an delegate for Saturday.
Okay. So we need to figure the logistics and make sure that you get the credentials, correct? Okay. Perfect. Okay. Perfect. Okay. Because I know that I'll be attending, Rob will be attending, but we just need to make sure that we have somebody there to vote for us.
They, they say the credential is easier to pass to another board member this year, but I haven't seen any instructions about it or. Anything really, just have to follow directions as they come along.
I think Jenny got the email.
Yeah, they sent it to all the board presidents in the, in the state. I guess I want to talk a little bit about Leadership WASDA visit. It was 18 school board directors. Came to Evergreen to tour Henry Alex High School and Cascadia Tech Academy. So they got to see. Both our districts and Clark County's efforts around pathways. And then. Victoria and Sue. Just fill it in if I miss it. Monica Stonier and, and Special Services. John Steach came back into town for, for this. Julie Tumulty and. And Joan Houston. That's a, that's a point where I got to learn that Joan Houston was a counselor at Union. So. The, the expertise and knowledge and depth of just. The history of the stories of those two schools and, and of Evergreen's role in 1599 were at a table for. School board directors from around the state from, there's one from Seattle, there's one from Castle Rock, so big and small. They got to see who we are. And we held what I thought was wonderful conversation about. Leadership for Change and what it took to bring. A change like Henry Alex High School. Into being given all the roadblocks that we had, a lot of failure and so forth. I learned a few things I didn't know about all the processes just by having that group in the room. And I appreciate, I deeply appreciate. Everyone who participated with us. Thank you so much. This program has impressed me. Increasingly as the, as the class sessions go on and. I don't know if they're holding it next year. It's usually an every two year kind of thing, but at the next opportunity, I highly recommend that. We send one or two of our members to this. That's really enhanced my thinking, leadership and dovetailed so very well with. Other workshops and, and development work that we did over the summer. So keep it in mind that it's really inexpensive. Other than that, yeah, the artist thing at Y East, that was really wonderful to see.
It was, it was a good conversation and I had to stretch my memory a little bit because it went back so far to, because it took 10 years. To get Hila going. But it was, it was satisfying to talk about it. It did though, I mean, the, for the smaller district, smaller rural districts. Did kind of break my heart a little bit that. We are so blessed to have opportunity in, in a community the size that we are. And they don't have, have that advantage and, and I. I almost kind of felt bad, like we were bragging or something about it, but. I also know that what we learn and there's ways that we can partner. With smaller districts, which we've done in the past and, and so we need to really think about that more is to. The local small districts, what we can do to help. So that was.
Joan Houston spoke to that on Saturday, talking about how. They're not allowed at the Skill Center to do a pair educator program, but we really need this county to get trained pair educators. Woodland has one, is what she said, and they were trying to establish a partnership that would. Let students participate in that.
All right. Anything else? Thanks to the foundation for fun night on Saturday and to all of the staff members and everybody who came out to support the foundation and. Raising money for the important programs that we have.
I did want to add to that because it was, I've been to a lot of the foundations events over the years. That one was probably one of the funnest. I, I mean, it was really enjoyable, but I think it was just, it's the first time that everybody's been together. To do the work of. Adding to the programs that our kids can have and, and have fun while we do it. It was, it was really a good time.
Pretty good dance moves up here too. I'm just saying.
And we have a lot of good community partners too that.
We do.
Come and, and year after year, they keep coming and supporting our, our systems and our teachers and we had to. Celebrate Teacher of the Year and some scholarship winners and just raise money for some of the programs that the foundation's been supporting for a long time.
Yeah, it was fun.
That Uber bus they arranged was brilliant. And I think it took a lot of pressure off people to have a good time and not have to drive.
All right. Next up is future agenda items. Do we have anything to add? Rob?
Thank you.
No?
Nope. I'll come, I'll come back with it next time.
Okay. You can always bring it up to Jenny or I too.
Yes, of course.
All right. Next up is public comments. Any community member wishing to address the board may do so during the designated time on the agenda for public comments. As long as the comments are not personnel related or about an individual employee or student and are not legal in nature. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes to address the board. Comments should be directed to the Board of Directors as a whole and may not be addressed to any individual member of the board, the administrative staff or the audience. Please state your name and district affiliation if any. First up is Bob Friedland. Come on up, Bob. How are you this evening?
Thank you. My name is Bob Friedland and I'm a member of the Clark County Developmental Disabilities Advisory Board. I identify as an older retired white man with curly gray hair and glasses. The Developmental Disabilities Advisory Board is charged with providing community leadership. To improve the efficiency and effectiveness of developmental disability programs throughout Clark County. The board then advises and makes recommendations to the Clark County counselors. On issues and services related to developmental disabilities. October is Disability Employment Awareness Month. As part of this celebration, the advisory board will be hosting the Development Disability Employment Awareness Awards. These awards honor people with developmental disabilities in Clark County. Who contribute to a dynamic, productive and inclusive workforce. Many of the nominees and award winners are former students here in Clark County. The celebration also recognizes the extraordinary efforts of large and small businesses. Who employ people with developmental disabilities in our community. This year, the Free Hybrid event will be on Wednesday, October 5th from 4 to 6 p.m. The event will be streamed online for those who prefer to watch from home. The live in-person event will be held at Clark College in Geiser Hall, which is located at 1933 Fort Vancouver Way. In Vancouver. In-person seating may be limited. So we are asking for registration so that, so that we know how many people to expect in person. For registration information, please call 564-397-2130. Or send an email to ddprogram@clark.wa.gov. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Bob. Somebody, I think Jackie was writing all that down, right? You got.
Writing it down too.
It was too. Okay. Oh, okay, good. All right. Next up is Bob, is it Dairy, Dairy Cat, Dairy Coat? Derek Cotty. Ah. Bob's here? And he's not online. No. Okay, then we will move on to Christie Peak. Go ahead and come up, Christie.
Hi, Christie. I don't need to hold the mic, do I? You can hear me? All right, okay. So I'm Christie Peak. I'm the Evergreen Education Association President and. Part of my role. I'm pretty loud. Part of my role is to communicate the needs of members to you as well as communicate back to the members. And tonight I haven't prepared any of my own words because sometimes the best way to let you know. What's going on in the front line is to let their words speak for them. So I'm here to speak their words and amplify their voices a little bit. On some trends that are coming up in the communication that I'm getting from my members. So I, I have printouts of transcripts of phone calls and emails that I've gotten. And I'm just going to share some of those words with you. I'm looking for advice on how to deal with safety concerns happening at our school. We have a number of students who require an excessive amount of adult support because they are unsafe. Daily, we are clearing rooms, locking our doors and being hit, punched and kicked. One entire wing of our school basically went into lockdown on several occasions because a student was destroying furniture. Banging on classroom doors and shouting swear words in the common area. We have three unfilled sped positions and our veteran sped teacher is leaving us next week. We are scared of what that means for the climate and safety of our school. Where, where can, is there a higher up way to report the unsafe conditions at our school? Where can specialists like our school psych send reports of abuse? We are drowning here. Different, these are all different comments stitched together. We are currently both understaffed and over caseload in sped in our school. New sped students are not in the correct programs. Students who need one-on-one support and two-to-one staff are listed as learning support. Our building admin asks for more support and hopefully after the October count begins, we will get it. I have an ongoing concern with staffing that's creating some big safety concerns. I wanted to see if it'd be possible for you to bring my concerns to labor management. Given the high levels of behavior and safety concerns in my class, I've become increasingly afraid that I can't keep the students in my staff. In my class safe on a daily basis. I have six students in my classroom that range from first to fourth grade. Five of the six students have one-on-one staff support in their IEP. But I have six students on IEPs and five are supposed to get one-on-one staff. Only three out of five of those positions are filled. We have two open positions that have been never, never been filled by a sub. We are entirely reactive, nothing proactive. I love my job. I would stay forever if I could actually do my job. You create the program for the kid, but we have kids that need expertise in programming for autism, severe behavior, learning support, et cetera. How many programs can one person be expected to build during the 10 or 15 minutes they are not with kids? When should they work on those programs? I love my job. I love my students. I don't feel that I can do them justice or do right by them or their families because I don't have enough support. RBTs, which I believe stands for. Behavior technicians, registered behavior technicians are the best support we have. They're amazing. But they're being pulled to cover missing people in life skills classes. My student that doesn't have a one-on-one actually has the most significant safety concerns and for the past week has required one-on-one staffing. In an alternative setting to ensure his safety and the safety of other students. For three days last week, I was the person working one-on-one with him because he was having self-injurious behavior. And talking about wanting to kill himself and I was the person he was most able to be safe with. My amazing classroom assistant helped run the classroom while I helped to get the student back on track, but I would like to see a more sustainable option. Our, our building as a whole has eight open staff assistant positions between seven classrooms. With additional staff absences, we've been down as many as 16 positions. We've had emergency situations come up that require several of our building support staff to respond for several hours. Leaving us with little to no backup support when crisis situations arise. We've been having these kinds of staff shortages since last year. It's exhausting and it's demoralizing. I'm wondering if the district is recognizing the severity of the safety concerns the situation poses in our building and if they have any plans for rem. the situation poses in our building, and if they have any plans for remedying it. I understand that the staffing shortages are across the district and even across other industries, but that doesn't make this situation safer or any easier to work with on a daily basis. There's a shift in Evergreen, and it's bad. Everyone in schools is hating life. My principals are working their butts off. I feel bad because I'm asking them for things.
Kristy, we're at the time.
Okay. I will submit the rest of the comments to you.
I do have a question. I assume that you're working with HR on anything that you can do to help us find these people because we have been looking very hard. And so I'm hoping that you're being cooperative and helping find those specialists that we need to have.
Thanks. Do you find specialists?
We have a staffing shortage. It's not like, it's not from lack of searching, trust me. And you know that. Sorry. I know.
All right, that concludes the people that have signed up for this evening. So we will call for a short recess where we'll sign papers, and then we'll reconvene in a board workshop where we will have a Board Director District Redistricting. Don't say that fast three times, discussion, and then a legislative update. We'll go ahead and go into recess. Thank you.